You're welcome. This meeting's being televised by Chelmsford Telemedia. Is anyone else present who's planning to record? Would they indicate by showing hands now? I don't see anyone. All right. I'd like to ask the members of the committee to take the students from McCarthy and Parker, that items first, as a courtesy, so the kids can go home, and then we'll proceed with the rest of the agenda, if that's all right. Okay? Is that all right? So, okay?
Yes. Absolutely.
Okay. So if the people from McCarthy and Parker would come up and do their thing, please.
Yeah, thank you. This is Principal Jeff Parks and Principal Kurt McPhee from McCarthy. Jeff is from Parker Middle School. And they're here as part of the first meeting of the month this year, some of the work that's happening at Parker and McCarthy. Because of the number of meetings that have been shuffled schedule-wise, we're actually doing both of the middle schools together. So we're happy the two of you could come today to review the happenings, and then also talk a little bit about the Knowledge Bowl team. And I know you have some kids with you as well. And the only thing I would ask is the few people who happen to be standing right in front of the TV, just when the presentation starts in a couple seconds, people are just gonna want to look at the TV screens. All right, so I'll turn it over to Kurt and Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us here. It's always a highlight of my year to be able to come here and share the good things that are going on in the school, so.
I feel the same. Thank you. Thanks for having us.
So, just to jump right in, the McCarthy School Climate Goal really centers on connectedness and trying to build and maintain strong relationships between adults and students in the building. We've done this in years past mainly through our advisory program. This year, we've kind of put a challenge out to all staff and not just do advisory-type topics and building those connections in a half an hour once a week, but to do it every day in every class. And so what we tried to do is bring in some PD training in that, so when we work with staff, trying to, you know, have them use language that creates those relationships or, you know, building routines in the classroom where the students are engaged and really into the work. So, this year, our PD has, you know, centered around that topic and around the topic of social-emotional health for students. We were able to bring in a trainer from Developmental Designs. This is an organization based in Minneapolis, whose belief's that students have four major basic needs: the need for autonomy, the need to feel competent, the need for relationships, and the need for fun. And so we brought in a trainer to work with staff centered on those topics. We also, on another early release day, we brought in Margie Daniels from Middle Sex Partnerships for Youth, and she did a, really, it was like a four-hour training on, you know, student mental health issues and topics, and how those play out in the classroom, and what types of things staff can do to address those issues and make those students feel more comfortable. And lastly, more recently, we brought in Dr. Christopher Willard, and his main focus was on mindfulness. So again, the challenge is to try to give teachers, you know, some tools in their toolkit that they can draw upon and build some of those mindfulness routines in the classroom. And so that's kind of what our focus has been on this year, our major focus on connecting with kids and kind of making sure our students are healthy socially and emotionally. The other big piece that we concentrated on this year is we worked on our social contract. So this is an exercise we've done, this is our second time we've done this. So, basically, how this works is each homeroom, we put out the challenge. We wanted to create what is called our social contract, which is basically how we do business at McCarthy. And we challenge everybody, staff members, students, to try to live up to our social contract, not just make it be a poster that hangs on every wall, but really measure themselves up. Are they measuring up? Every time we meet in assemblies, you know, we try to, you know, bring everything back to the social contract. So basically, each homeroom did this exercise where they had to come up with the five bullet points. And if you kind of go right down the bullet points, you can kind of see that they match up with the PRIDE acronym. So each homeroom did this exercise, and then we brought together a representative from each homeroom to work as a grade-level group, and then they narrowed down the five bullets, again, as a grade level. And then we brought together two members from each grade level along with two staff members, because the staff did the same exercise, and we, you know, kind of wordsmithed and came up with what is our final social contract. And lastly, you know, we've had the luxury of having a parent that has gone out and gotten us a really nice banner. Thank you, Hannah Barker. And we signed it as a staff. So we spent a couple of days bringing classrooms down. Every student signs it, staff members sign it, and the banner hangs in our lobby of our school. So whenever anybody walks in, that should tell them how we do business at the McCarthy Middle School. So that was an exercise we did this year. So my incoming fourth graders, who we just toured the building, I showed them the contract, and I said, "You know, in your four years here, you'll be able to help us create one of these, and you'll sign one as well." So, that's that. Other things that have gone on this year, just I want to highlight, our cross-country program has continued to expand. We ran about five meets this spring, I mean, in the fall. This spring, the track team has exploded, and just this past weekend, our four-by-100 relay boys finished first in the state by two hundredths of a second. So Mr. Guerra has done a wonderful job with that program. We had about 170 kids involved with that in the springtime. You know, staying on the same theme of Mr. Guerra, he is our teacher who, along with Debbie Venagopal and Lisa Scaff, has run our Science Olympiad. They were, they had finished third in the state this year. So in four years' time, they've gone from eighteenth to eleventh to seventh to third now. So that is just, again, just a program that kids love and are involved with, and, you know, certainly a highlight. Put on a wonderful play Cinderella. We, again, award-winning ensembles. Going back to the drama, I know at least one of the students was nominated for a state-level award in the Theater Guild, and the group also had a couple other nominations, so that was a highlight. And lastly, I'll mention, you know, in the 41st year of operations, our Project 300 food drive, you know, broke all records. We collected 31,000 food items. It's a highlight of our fall every year. Mr. Thomas is one of the founders of that. It was great to have him join us last year at the 40th year. So again, it's a great unifying event that, you know, the whole school kind of, you know, just, you know, goes all out for. So it's been a very successful year at McCarthy.
Great. Thanks, Kurt. Nailed it. Thank you. So over at Parker, this entire year and foreseeable future, we're going to continue to focus on ensuring that we're meeting our students in not only their academic development, but their social-emotional wellness as well. So we're going to continue, and we have been this year, having our counselors teaching lessons in classrooms. So we're finding that getting the experts in front of the students, and in fifth and sixth grade, they teach these courses independently, and in seventh and eighth grade, they're co-teaching with our health educators and helping to make sure that we're really working to meet all students at their developmental level. We've seen over the last few years, at least in the 11 that I've been at Parker, things, the student issues that they're coming with and the challenges that they're having is evolving. So we're working with our counselors to really document what are they coming to see them for, be it depression, a kid's feeling more anxious, what is it? And then for us to be able to figure out, what do we need to do in order to help make sure that not only are the students successful, but for us as the principals and our leadership team at the school, to help make sure that we're giving the teachers what they need to feel more comfortable. So that's going to continue to be one of our focus areas moving forward. I'm excited to share that we were awarded a $10,000 grant from Lowell General Hospital, Circle Health Grant, which we'll be using for professional development. So we're actually looking at and working with the Developmental Designs folks that Kurt had brought over to McCarthy. We also have a group of teachers who are in their second year of a book study from a psychologist named Jessica Minahan, and she's local, and she's written a few books. And we had Jessica come out and work with a team of teachers last year. So I'm also thinking that it would be useful and helpful for us to bring her to work with the entire staff. So again, really trying to build everybody's skill set in working with students with a variety of emotional development needs. So looking at, Dr. Hersch, if you could move?
Okay.
That's okay. Thank you. So beyond that, some of the things, last year, I had brought the Parker Pride student reps with us. This is our sixth year of this strong program that we have, and really, the whole key focus area or areas are to highlight and reward and recognize students for their ongoing positive behavior and achievement. So we know how challenging it is, because all of us have navigated through middle school, and we know how tough that can be. So sticking with the district core themes of perseverance, respect, integrity, dedication, and empathy, we continue to have staff members and students working collectively. We meet bi-weekly, and we're sharing ideas for developing programs and things we can do within the school. Today, as Principal McPhee had mentioned, we had the students from our, we had Harrington and Byham come to us. Well, our PRIDE reps were responsible for organizing what that meeting was going to look like. So we've had the way we've done it for several years, but they really took it over, and they divided the students up into small groups. The excitement level of not only the kids coming in, but our young leaders, being able to take everything that we've been working on last year throughout this year and really apply that in an active setting, and really being the faces that these kids will see when they come back, was really a great experience. So, you know, all the credit to them and the folks that work on the committee as well. At the end of this week, we'll be adding new reps. So each year, we have sixth graders join us, or seventh graders, you know, there'll be next year, seventh-grade reps. So we're about to really kind of announce, and we'll celebrate that as a school community, who those new leaders will be that will work with us. And we're doing that in conjunction with the teachers, you know, all of the teachers who have had the opportunity to have these students as they've moved through the school. We had our second annual PRIDE rally in February, which was a wild success. We had a lot of fun, and again, that's really student-led. They come up with the ideas, they help with the logistics in it. It's really a good celebration for our entire staff across the board. And then some other things that are happening, you know, outside of these, and I give, one of our sixth-grade teachers, Tracy Cody, came up with Parker Middle School Beyond the Classroom last year, and I really like the way it sounds. So just kind of highlighting some of the other things that we do. We have an annual floor hockey tournament that's a lot of fun, and even this year, we had the students play against a group of staff members. They beat us pretty good, but that's not the important part. We had a lot of fun. It's really about just kind of really building that camaraderie between the staff and the kids. Very strong music and arts program, as you know. And looking at our drama program, who put on Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, which was amazing this year, and looking to see the great things that they'll continue to do. Our Parkers Got Talent event is always very well-attended, and it's just really grown through the years, and it's a lot of fun to bring everyone together and really continue to put the spotlight on students and show what they're good at, because all of our kids, whether it's in the classroom, out of the classroom, on the field, on the stage, it's really about us trying to come together and get creative about giving them opportunities to show their skill. And that's something that we're going to continue to work on. So with that, it brings me to the featured guests of the night. Kurt and I work very closely together. We talk all the time. And the Knowledge Bowl, which is a new event for Chelmsford to participate in, is really a cool opportunity for us to be able to bring the schools together, not that it's a competition all the time, right, between us, but it's a nice way for us to have something that the students and staff can come together to work on. So I'd like to invite our Knowledge Bowl coaches and students who were able to make it tonight. So I would just like to introduce, before we turn it over to these folks to talk a little bit. So Ashley Jean from Parker is our seventh-grade ancient Civ teacher. Next to her is Sheila Kish, who is one of our seventh-grade ELA teachers, and Sean Livingston from the McCarthy Middle School, seventh grade as well.
Eighth-grade social studies teacher.
I had a subject.
Coach that's not here is Kristin Lyons as well. She's one of our health teachers. So, turn it over to you folks.
Hello. I want to introduce some of the students from Parker that are participating in the Knowledge Bowl with us tonight. Not here is Sachi Badola. She's a seventh grader. Not here is Olivia Blanchett, and she's an eighth grader. Sean Hayes is an eighth grader. Aiden Hennessy is an eighth grader. And Aki Yagadala. No, Yalagada. Yeah, Aki Yalagada, he's also an eighth grader.
And then from McCarthy, we have Pranitha Bari, eighth grader. Michelle Lee, eighth grade. Evan Meltzer cannot be here, he's in eighth grade. We've got Ryan Moore, also in eighth grade, and Jennifer Zhu in seventh grade.
Hey, kids, just put your eyes on me. No, no, Jeff, get back in the picture. Okay? Thank you. So just a quick update of what is the Knowledge Bowl. The Knowledge Bowl is a fast-paced quiz format-style game show type of style. I call it Jeopardy, don't I, in the class? Jeopardy-style, which tests middle school students' knowledge in math, science, history, social studies, and also literature, and just general...
Current events.
Current events, thank you.
Yep.
The word I missed. And general current events. Who participates? Chelmsford first-year participants, but Borica, Drakeatt, Lowell, Chuxbury, and Tingsborough are other teams that we will face in the challenge.
So we're new to the competition. We just started practicing a couple weeks ago, and we kind of alternate between schools. So we do one day at Parker and one day at McCarthy each week, and they've been doing really well. They work really well together, even though they kind of just met each other, some of them. We will, we're looking forward to continuing to grow the program next year, so we're thinking it could be a longer event, where we can maybe have some competitions or something to keep it going, a great way to narrow down the kids. And the event is next Monday and Tuesday, so it's a two-night event. We'll be competing on Monday night at Drakeatt High School, and if we make it to the next round, we'll be there Tuesday night as well. Anyone's more than welcome if you'd like to join us. And if you'd like more info, you can check out the Lowell Sun, which featured an article calling us a force to be reckoned with today. So, we're good to go.
And kudos to the students who are participating. As we read the articles about the other teams, because they've been featured in the Lowell Sun, they've started practicing in October, November, and we started three weeks ago, so... But, right, Aiden?
We're gonna win.
We're gonna win.
Awesome. So I'm wondering if anyone might have questions for the students, or, you know, about competing, how they feel about being involved in this?
How about them if you do?
Kind of interested in participating at the high school level? We have that team that's on PBS, competes all over the state.
Yeah, that would be a very fun opportunity.
See, they're a great team.
From different schools finishing each other's thoughts.
Does everyone compete at one time?
In the first round, we all work together on, it's a math round, we all work together on some math problems for each of the other rounds. Four kids go up, and similar to Jeffrey's style, the kids cannot collaborate. They're each independently buzzing in and answering questions.
Very good. Very clear.
Crystal.
That was excellent.
Who won last year?
Unseated the Lowell champs, I believe, if I saw that correctly.
Lowell was last, two years prior to that, yes.
This is your all, first year.
Yep.
All I can say is we're very happy, first of all, for the great publicity that you've already gotten for the district, and on behalf of the committee, wish you the best of luck. I'm sure you'll make us proud, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, kids, and thanks, Jeff and Kurt and staff, for coming this evening.
Okay, resuming business on the agenda. I intend to motion to approve the school committee minutes of May 16.
I make a motion to approve the May 16 school committee meetings.
Second.
Any corrections or discussion of the matter? Hearing none, all in favor, aye. Aye. Any negative voter abstention, saying none. All right. Now's the time for public input. When you come up, if you'd share your name and address for the secretary, that would be helpful.
My name is Michael Shea, and if you ask my wife, my address is 200 Richardson Road in Chelmsford. I am, in the words and estimations of my past and present evaluators, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Linda Hirsch, former Dean Heather Galante, and current Whittier Dean John McIsaac, an exemplary teacher. Perhaps more importantly... In these two notes written by seniors in one of my classes this year, I am an amazing and awesome teacher. According to them, they looked forward to coming to my class each day, and this is the greatest accolade that a teacher can receive. I say these things not because I want to be self-congratulatory, they are, after all, not my words, but because I want this body to know that I'm important in the life of this school community, and I'm not alone, as you can see. You may hear tonight, and probably will, the voices of many teachers who are vital to this school district and this community. We're vital because we do, and better than anyone else, I might add, the most important thing a teacher can do: we care about our students. And if these testimonials that I've shared mean anything, it's that students and administrators know we care. That's why it saddens me to hear that this body has been reluctant to negotiate a fair contract. It's been nearly a year without one. The methodically slow manner in which bargaining talks have proceeded indicate that some members of this body believe that teachers in general are eminently replaceable, that specific teachers have no specific worth, and that loyalty is a dirty word. My loyalty is to the students of Chelmsford. Like anything of value, it's been earned through reciprocal acts of loyalty. Specifically, my students share my dedication to learning, and that kind of loyalty is beyond measure. But that doesn't mean that we cannot or should not measure loyalty in this district. Among other things, loyalty signifies the security of knowing that teachers as professionals and teaching as a profession will not be negotiated out of existence. I've given this district my time, countless days of arriving at 5:30 a.m. and staying until my students no longer need my help. I've given my students my knowledge, my hard work, and my heart. Their successes are my successes. Their sorrows are my sorrows, and their future is my future. I mean that literally. When my days as a teacher are done, and my hope is that it won't be for at least another dozen years, I look forward to the reward of being replaced by someone I helped to inspire. But I can't look forward to that if this district deems that I'm expendable, that my colleagues are expendable, and that's what's best for kids is the financial bottom line. That kind of indifference doesn't encourage people to want to go into the profession. You can see it in this district already. Teachers are leaving. Young teachers are leaving, and they talk to each other through the most ubiquitous forms of social media in history. If Chelmsford continues to look at the profession this way, it will no longer be a profession in this town. It'll be a mercenary role without loyalty, without dedication, and without those intangible rewards like the notes that I brought with me tonight. Loyalty to teachers is loyalty to students. The Chelmsford Federation of Teachers, of which I am a member, believes that continuity and community are the keys to student success. There are members on this board who think that our jobs should be subject to the whims of political pragmatism. This board's actions indicate a belief that getting rid of teachers without the thought of consequences for student learning has no consequences for the climate of our schools, but it does. It has dire consequences. I urge this committee, its negotiators in particular, for the health of this district, to provide for a fair and reasonable contract, and to do so with haste. The parents of this community deserve it, the students of this district deserve it, and the teachers in our schools have earned it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erica Harrington. I live at 38 Lovett Lane. I am the parent to a 2015 graduate, a 2017 graduate, a second grader, and I have an incoming kindergartner next year. I teach math at Chelmsford High School. I am treasurer of the Chelmsford Federation of Teachers, and I am a member of our contract negotiating team. To say that I have a vested interest in our schools, our teachers, our administrators, and our town is an understatement. Over the past two months, multiple administrators have announced that they do not plan to return to Chelmsford next year, while others are currently looking. In addition to five teaching positions being eliminated, several highly-qualified, well-liked teachers being blindsided with non-renewals, many veteran teachers are currently seeking employment in other districts. I am sure I do not need to list the many things Chelmsford teachers do with and for their students, and they do those things because they want to, not because they need to, or even because they're being asked to. While Chelmsford is underpaid in comparison to many of the districts nearby, educators used to want to be here. They wanted to be able to say they were in Chelmsford. They wanted to be able to say that they were part of a community that valued its teachers. Sadly today, many teachers do not feel valued. Instead, they feel taken advantage of. Today marks the 167th Day of School, which means that teachers have been working under an expired contract for 167 days. More astonishing, the first negotiating session took place on April 11, 2016, which was 421 days ago. How is that acceptable? I urge you to negotiate a contract with the teachers and nurses before any more time passes and before Chelmsford loses additional dedicated staff to other towns. The Chelmsford Federation of Teachers, the school committee, and the superintendent should all be working together to better the Chelmsford schools. We should all be on the same team.
Mike stole my line. I'm the senior member of the Chelmsford High School's English Department. My principal address is 200 Richardson Road, North Chelmsford. I've been a resident there for just about 20 years, room 232. Chelmsford is filled with extraordinary students that we teachers are so very privileged to teach and interact with on a daily basis, and Chelmsford parents faithfully entrust us implicitly with the education of their kids. We appreciate that more than they could possibly know. Our schools perform at an elevated level that matches more affluent school systems in our state. Our in-school and extracurricular activities provide flashpoints of pride and achievement again and again, all year-round, every year. They are extolled on the CPS website, in the local newspapers, on Facebook, in the very homes of this town. All of the PowerPoints that you see, shared by principals and coordinators, projects, trips, performances, community service events, athletic achievements, artifacts, they are so much about the students here in Chelmsford, but they are also about the teachers. Without teachers, advisors, coaches, and mentors, these remarkable events, these remarkable achievements, won't happen. Credit these truly amazing kids, and I tell that to everyone that doesn't know Chelmsford, that the kids in this district are awesome. Credit these truly amazing kids, but also remember that none of this happens without the teachers, who give so much of themselves during so many hours of work, inside and outside the classroom, certainly beyond what is expected. outside the classroom, certainly beyond what is expected. Administrators come, they rise, they depart. They come, they rise, they depart. And we, the teachers of Chelmsford Public Schools, remain here to keep on helping these kids, who have so much potential, become all they can be, all they were meant to be. We are certainly appreciative of the opportunity to work in this amazing community, with these amazing kids, with these appreciative parents, but also mystified by a school committee and superintendent that do not want to offer us fair pay and a reasonable contract. Please uphold your end of this bargain, and we will continue to do every possible thing in our teacher power to help your children be great. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ben Cole, 82 Brook Kiln Road. Before the divorce, the address was 200 Richardson Road. As a member of the negoti... Actually, first, before that, I'd just like to say that as a parent of a child who had Mr. Shea, those accolades were understated, just as they would be for Mrs. Kenny, Mrs. Kramer, Ms. Salmon, and all the teachers. My children came through South Row, then McCarthy, and then the high school. And I know that they'd be just as successful if they went to Center, to Byham, to Harrington, and to Parker. Am I missing a elementary school? But as a member of the negotiation team, I will admit that it's been rather acrimonious. People's feelings have been hurt on both sides. While that's unfortunate, it's not unexpected. As a teacher, the past few years have not been easy for me personally or professionally. But however, as a teacher, like many of my colleagues behind me, behind you, we've drawn... I've drawn my inspiration from the students. They give me the strength to teach every single day. And I can't say that would happen many other places. And while it's nice to get there, to draw the strength from the students, we, as a union, would like to get our inspiration from above as well. And by above, I'm not talking there, I'm talking the administration and the school committee. We'd like to draw inspiration and appreciation from members of the school committee, and by that I mean not just financially, we're talking professionally as well. We would really like to be recognized. Thank you for your time. One last thing. This came to me as I was listening to my colleagues. This is supposed to... I meant this as a message of hope that we can get a contract soon. Actually, no, immediately. The only ominous thing I would say is that, once the town loses confidence in the school district, it's tough to get it back. Chelmsford High School, over 90% of the people send their kids to Chelmsford High School. That's even higher than in Concord-Carlyle. Once you lose confidence in the school system, it's almost impossible to get it back, and just think what that does to a tax base. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Hart, and I live at 20 McFarland Road. The reason for my attendance tonight is specific to Center School. I've been informed that we are losing a very valuable teacher at the end of our current school year. I was informed that due to his lack of tenure, Don Gardner is being asked not to return next year and being let go. I need to express my concern for this, as he is very much favored among the kids who attend the school. Although this is only his second year at Center, he has implemented some great programs that keep the children engaged in wanting to be an active part of their gym class. In today's day and age, with childhood obesity, this, in my eyes, is very important in keeping kids active and moving. He encourages self-worth, he pushes kids to work together, and rewards them with the much coveted Golden Sneaker Award. Last year, Don took on the challenge of an all-school field day. As a volunteer for this activity, it was a great success. The kids had a great day with many different activities and activity stations. I witnessed so many smiles and high fives for the kids working together towards each individual goal. This year in 4th grade, my son was given a project to complete on a state. He, on his own, chose of all the states to do Ohio, and dressed his part, not as a famous celebrity from Ohio, and there were a good amount to choose from, but he chose to dress and complete his oral presentation as his gym teacher, Mr. Gardner. This says to me, it is all and how the children view him and respect what he is as a teacher to them. It is, in my opinion, and the opinions of others at the Center School, both parents, children, and even other staff, that it will be a terrible mistake to lose a teacher like Don Gardner. Please reconsider your decision, both for Don and any others who are being let go district-wide, that we want these teachers, we need these teachers. Chelmsford prides themselves in our school system. Let's not compromise those qualities if we can find another way. Thanks for your time tonight.
Good evening. My name is Katie Sullivan. I'm the senior-most member of the Social Studies Department, but not the oldest. I want that to be clear, please get that down in the minutes. I reside at 200 Richardson Road, Chelmsford, Mass. I'm here tonight as a teacher, who has worked for this district for 20 years and loved every moment of it. I'm here also as Vice President of Teachers and Nurses for the Chelmsford Federation. I truly believe we are a unique group of educators in Chelmsford, and that's why I have chosen to stay here for 20 years. I'd like to retire from Chelmsford. Please make that possible. I could go on about the dedication of the teachers of this system, but I shouldn't have to. Everyone at this table should know that we are dedicated to educating the children of this town, and no one here should ever question that. But I do have a question. I question why I don't have a contract. After 167 days without a contract, to put it mildly, I'm annoyed, and I'm annoyed with you. I sat in a songage center Saturday night, and Doctor Lang's speech rang true on so many levels. He told students, "Be active, get involved, give back." He went on to say, "Be an active participant. Get involved in social causes. Contribute what you know." Those are the words that the teachers of this district live by daily. They model this behavior by being involved at many levels, including the union. I'm not embarrassed to admit that I'm working class, and I admit and know that organized labor works. I know that I can trust my negotiating team. They understand the needs of the teachers in this district because they are teachers. I'm beginning to wonder if this committee has the same understanding. I understand it's a busy time with vacations and graduations, but I'm asking you to meet with the negotiating team and finalize a contract. I trust them, and I'm hoping to be able to trust you to get the job done. The teachers of Chelmsford deserve a fair contract, and we deserve it now.
Hello? I like a microphone. I don't think it's on. Is it on, Linda?
It is. If you pull it closer to your mouth, it will work better.
How's that?
That's great.
Can you hear me?
I can hear ya.
All right, good. I'm Marie O'Donnell. And I am the Executive Vice President of the Chelmsford Federation of Teachers. Before I was the Executive Vice President, though, I have been a teacher at Byham School for 22 years. Proudly, very happily, every single moment, I'm blessed to be able to do it. I've dedicated my career to the children of Chelmsford. So a funny thing happened to me this year. I was at a family event for Byham School, and somebody tapped me on the shoulder. It was a parent, and she said to me, "Hey, Mrs. O., do you remember me? I was in your 2nd grade class. This is my 1st grader." It's a little humbling, not gonna lie. Never really thought of myself to be old enough to have my students' children in my class, but yet, it's so amazing. It made me so proud that I have another round of Chelmsford kids, that I get to be a part of their lives. What's even more amazing is I'm not an outlier in Chelmsford. Nearly half of teachers in this town are on our top step. 48% of my colleagues join me there. And by the end of our next contract, hopefully that will ratify soon, 60% of our teachers will be on that top step. Hundreds and hundreds of teachers have dedicated their career to the children in Chelmsford. So I can't even say enough that that dedication is not something that any of you should take lightly, because there are lots of districts we could work for, and we've chosen to stay here in Chelmsford, like Katie said. Raise your hand behind me if you plan to retire from Chelmsford. How awesome is that? Two of our pride core values that have been discussed tonight are perseverance and dedication. So our teachers overwhelmingly demonstrate these values over many years of their career. But is it really valued by this administration, or is it really valued by this committee? It makes me so sad to see that our district's leaders don't necessarily demonstrate those same values. More and more often, veteran teachers are feeling worried about their status and feeling no longer valued. When administrators say out loud, "I can get two brand-new teachers for the price of one veteran teacher," that's astounding to me. It makes me really wonder where the values are in this district. In April, the CFT came to a meeting, and we reminded the community that in our administrator's last contract, many of them received sizable pay increases. And the CFT board couldn't have been more happy for them. Sal said it best when he pointed out that in order to attract good candidates, we needed to have competitive salaries, right? I'd be willing to argue that the same theory should be used when looking at our teachers. I like my people more than I even like this microphone. Here's the interesting thing about that, though. There's a revolving door at the front of this building in the administration. With the exception of Linda Hirsch, the central administrative team is completely new. Jake cleaned house last spring at the end of his first year. And believe me, we've all suffered from all the administrators working out the kinks of their new jobs. We've really had significant challenges helping this new crop of administrators learn how to follow a contract. So far this spring, we've learned that we're losing at least three of our leaders. I wouldn't be surprised to learn that there would be more to come. We're losing two principals this year, one to a job that's a significant step down in the administrative ladder, and one to no job at all. What does that say? People that are getting big raises are leaving with no job to go to. We're also losing a dear friend of mine, Lori McDermott, our K-5 reading coordinator. She started the same year I did, in 2nd grade across town, when I started, 22 years ago. She left us to go to Westford. We grabbed her, we dragged her back, and now she's leaving again to go to Westford again. And I don't begrudge Lori all those great things in Westford. I just hate to think that she's leaving us again, and we're losing her expertise and her amazing talents. And I just want to know, what the heck is going on in this building that's chasing our administrators out of our district? What or who is the common denominator? But you can look no further than the teachers to find out what we need in our administrators. We need perseverance, we need dedication. We need 50% of the administrators to be on the top step and to have 22 years of service. When I came to Chelmsford, it was 1994. The principal at Byham was Jane Gilmore. Jane served 20 years in this district before she retired. Dick Moser was the superintendent, Karen Mazza was the assistant superintendent. Dick Moser served 17 years, Karen Mazza served 15 years, as far as I can calculate. I might be off a year or two. But we did a little digging to find out the history of administrators in our district. And some of these people, I have no idea who they are, or if I'm saying their names correctly. Please jump in if I'm saying them wrong. Steve Mydell was here for 33 years. He taught English, he was an English department head, he was a dean and a principal. Al Thomas, 31 years, right? Started at the middle school, then went to the high school, department head, went on to be a principal, right? These are administrators that are digging their roots in, just like the teachers are digging their roots in. There are people who retired from Chelmsford. They were committed to the children in Chelmsford. They have the same commitment that our current faculty has now. We built this district that you now have in your charge. We need to bring that value back, that kind of commitment, again. We can do that by giving a fair contract to teachers so that more and more of us want to dig in our roots in Chelmsford. We need to find administrators who are willing to put their time in here too, in Chelmsford, not just step on our heads to climb to bigger positions in other districts. We need administrative leaders who value longevity, experience, commitment to the children of Chelmsford and their children's children. We need more professionals to see generations of students walk in these halls in our schools. You need to keep our teachers here so that we can continue these traditions that mean so much. The teachers are still as dedicated as when we were following our leaders that shared our values. You can learn from the teachers in this district. Our loyalty to the children in this town is obvious in our years of service. Prove that you share that value in perseverance, dedication, commitment. Settle a fair contract so that we can all go back to focusing on what makes this town a better place, one kid at a time. You have the power to do something. Don't screw it up.
Hi, I'm Debbie Hayward, 17, LeMay Way. Previously, 200 Richardson Road. I'm a retired teacher. I retired last June after 32 years in the public school system. But I'm also a lifelong Chelmsford resident. And when I looked out at all of the school committee members, I voted for you with hope. Hope that this, our system, would continue to be what it has been. Unfortunately, that's been a disappointment. And I just think one of the things we really need to do is to come together as a team. Our school system needs to retain these good teachers. We train them, we spend all our energy, you spend all your money, training them, and they stay three or four years, and they leave. I'm a taxpayer, so I know where the taxes are going. I went all through Chelmsford schools, I graduated from Chelmsford schools, and I never wanted to leave. But we really need to be able to train the teachers. We have to offer them job security and higher pay so that they stay with us. We have teachers constantly leaving after three or four years, not as much for the money is there, is the main issue, but also just the job security. To know that there's timely transfer language, that there's security within the new state statue of the seniority, which is no longer. I just urge you to work with the teachers to develop a contract. I am on the negotiating team as well. That will include not only fair wages and job security, but language that allows for timely transfers, and so the teachers feel that they're comfortable in the positions they're in. I look forward to continuing to work with you for a fair contract. And one of the things my parents taught me is to be part of the solution and not the problem. So let's find a fair, equitable solution to all of these problems.
Hi, my name is Amna Mian. I have lived in Chelmsford for thirty-one years. My children went through the school system, they got a good education. And I want you to look around this room, look at how many people are here. We all love our children, we love our community, and I would appreciate if we can come and give the contract not only to them, but also to the parents. We care. I have been in the system nineteen years. I could have easily gone to another school system and worked there, but my dedication to this town, and if you ask anybody, along with all my colleagues here, we a hundred percent are in. Al was my children's principal, and he knows my family, and he knows my dedication to this town. And I have a dedication to every one of them standing here. I have been very upset the last couple of days, knowing that some of these people are having hard time, and that's not a good thing. We need to be one. Stronger together, we are one. But as soon as we divide, we go in different directions. So please keep that in mind when you are looking at contracts. And also, in classes, we teach our kids above-the-line and below-the-line behavior. We need to judge ourselves because we are role models for our students. I forgot to tell you where I live. My husband would say I live in Chelmsford schools, but I live at Seven Hemlock Drive. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that, excuse me, would like to address the committee?
This is a bit off-topic, but I'd like to share some good news. Uh, my name is Kirk Marshall, and I'm the chairman of the Arts and Technology Education Fund. The Arts and Technology Education Fund was created by Town Meeting in 1996, and since then, the committee has awarded over eighty-five thousand dollars in grants. The purpose of the Arts and Technology Education Fund is to provide supplemental funding to support educational initiatives and projects that enhance the existing curriculum of the Chelmsford Public Schools. The members of our committee are Evelyn Thorin, Angelo Toronto, Dr. Jay Lang, Jeff Porzio, Beverly Barrett, Hannah Barker, Jan Mountsey, and Carrie Meekle. All the projects that receive supplemental funding must support the mission and belief statements of the Chelmsford Public Schools and be in accordance with the Chelmsford School Committee policy. We would like to thank the generous taxpayers of Chelmsford who have donated to our fund either directly or through rounding up on their tax bill. We would also like to thank those individuals who have made a contribution to our teacher recognition program. The teacher recognition program allows students, both current and former, parents or other interested parties, to make a donation to our fund in the name of a teacher or school department employee. A total of three thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars in grants was awarded during the spring nineteen, uh, the spring 2017 application project, uh, process. And I'd like to mention the grant recipients right now. We have eight grant recipients. The first grant recipient is Erica Barrett of Center School, who won a grant for touch math technology. The second grant recipients were Deidra Brogren and Susan Francisco of South Row, who received a grant for a program called Facilitating Flexible Thinking and Social Problem Solving. The next grant recipient was Kay Carter of Center School, who received a grant for a program called Mind Yeti. The next grant recipient is Mary Ellen Forty of the CHIPS Program, who received a grant for preschool building center. The next teachers that received a grant were Allison LaCasse and Sean Wright of McCarthy Middle School for a program called Chamber Music in the McCarthy Band Program. The next grant recipient is Mary Ellen Olson of Center School, who received a grant called Blended Learning. The next grant recipient is Emily Porton of McCarthy Middle School, who received a grant called Leveled Books for Skills Classroom. Finally, the last grant recipient is Susan Slocum of McCarthy Middle School for a program called Nordic Fiddlers. These grant recipients are another reason why we should all be proud of our school system. Thank you.
On behalf of the School Committee, I want to thank you and hope that you'll extend our thanks to the rest of the committee. This is another example of the many elements in our community that are supportive of our district. Thanks again.
Thank you, Al.
I hope we're still in public session. This is Maria, I'm Maria Santos, I'm from Nineteen Parkhurst Road. First of all, it's wonderful to see this room filled with people. It's about time. I'm glad you're here. Um, it's very important to show that these teachers mean something to this town. I walked into the store and I started seeing people that have impacted the lives of my children, and they're personal to me, they're personal to my children, um, and I appreciate every single moment of service they've given. Now, it's not just a service, it's a profession and it's a job, and it's under a contract. And I understand contracts. As an attorney, work with them all the time, understand that there has to be a give and take. It takes time to get to a, a point where you can reach an agreement, but this is too long. It's gone way too long. And as a result, we see every day in the schools, the lack of morale, and that's not a good thing. It takes a very long time to rebuild. Trust is at the center of it all. The contract has got to get done. I just want to thank each person that's here, including the committee, for listening with open minds and truly trying to get to the end point, which is that contract. I urge you, please, consider thinking about getting to it before everybody leaves school this year. It's good for the teachers, it's good for our kids, and it's good for our town and its future. If you're dealing with a few bucks, here's what I think, and I'm going to urge my fellow parents and citizens of this town to think about it carefully. The schools of this town are behind the whole worth of the town. As people, we're creating the new generation, the next generation of leaders, the next generation of voters, these folks are at the center of it, parents are as well, and so are you and the decisions that you make as administrators, leaders, committee members. Urge you to think about that, and thank you. Thank you for the opportunity, it's very important. Have a good evening.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the committee before we leave public input? As we close, first of all, I would like to thank those that came forward and, and spoke. One thing that you may find, although some of you won't, I hope, find strange is that I would echo the comments made by almost everyone. I don't think there's anyone looking around here at the members of this committee who don't value teachers. I've worked with several of the people that came up, and I'll validate everything they said. That doesn't mean that we can go through and, and do everything that you want in terms of collective bargaining. All I can tell you is that those of us at the table are trying just as much as the people at the other side. I don't know where all the breakdown's coming, hopefully we can resolve it. This district's probably had one of the greatest years in the history of the school system, and our one-hundred years of school system. Our athletic teams, our drama teams, you name it, and not just the high school level, they get most of the publicity, but we've heard, as the reporters have come in from the different schools and told us about all the undertakings that they've made over the last year, we're proud of all of that. Every chance I get, I extol the virtues of this system and the people that make it great, and you're the people that make it great. Because we're not able to, haven't been able to resolve the contract, doesn't mean we don't value you. There's a gap there. I'd love to give you a huge pay raise. We'll do what we can do. We have limitations, and the union knows that. And I think we're, I think we're close, I think we've been close for a long time. It's not easy. But again, look around, you know, Dennis is a, a new member of the committee. He's a graduate, he's an educator, he's committed to kids, he's coached for years in addition to, in addition to teaching. John Moses comes from a little different background, but he's military, he's protected our country, he's committed to the town, and he's got little kids that are going to school here. Sal's heavily invested in the town, he coaches for nothing. He loves kids, he spends half his life working for kids. So the people here aren't bad people, and we're trying to do the, a good job for the district, just as you are, and we will continue to do so. So hopefully, you know, at least get past the thing that we don't like teachers and that we don't value you. We value you highly, and I would, I would agree, this is probably one of the best educated, most dedicated group of teachers in the state. So please, you can bargain hard, if you can dislike some of the things we do, but please don't tell the people that we don't appreciate you. Thank you.
I waited.
I, uh, I'd like to, I think we've closed public session.
No, I didn't hear you say that.
I'd like to say something in response to Al. Well, first of all, everything that was said here, I want you to know that you're a hundred percent right. I feel that way, that's why I ran for school committee. I wanted to fight for not only the administration of getting the right people to steer our ship, but also making sure our teachers have a home. So, I'd like to take it even further. You see, when the town of Chelmsford, and I've always said this from the very beginning, and I've been preaching this since I was lucky enough to be on this board, it's not the teachers against us, it's us against the town. Because why? Because we get X amount of dollars from the town, from the voters. We get X amount of dollars from the town managers, and we have to disperse that as best we can. Now, this year, everybody knows that Paul offered two percent across the board, a two percent quota. Now, do I think the teachers deserve more than two percent? Absolutely, they do. As a matter of fact, not only have we gave that, all that two percent across the board, that exactly what Paul gave, I actually think the teachers deserve more. So I'm asking, not only the people here, but everybody out there, I very much want to give the top step, almost five percent increase that was asked for. Absolutely. I can't freeze the lower steps, I won't let that happen. I won't let teachers, that forty percent of the teachers suffer. What I'm asking, though, is if we can get to that town meeting and get more money, then we can give more money to the teachers, because right now, we've given as much as the town has offered us to give or authorized us. And I think the teachers deserve more. But what I don't think should happen is imagine all those young teachers that have come on board. Don't you think they deserve a raise? Don't you think those teachers should get a raise just like everybody else? So I'm asking, please, help us get more money for these contracts, because right now, I have to tell you, uh, I realize that sixty percent after next year will be the top step, but there's still forty percent out there, and I want to fight hard for that forty percent and make sure they get an equal raise just like everyone else. So please, come to Town Meeting, help us get more money for the teachers, because right now, you guys don't get enough money, because all we've been able to give is what the town has given us. We've already offered that to the, to the unions. And we're really close, and I think the unions and I, and this board can make a deal on some other language that's out there, but to say that Jay Lang cleaned house, I gotta tell you the truth, there were, there were people that were leaving here before Jay came on board. To say that you heard an administrator say that I can get it, two teachers for the price of one? I, I agree with you. Miss, Miss O'Donnell, I, excuse me, Miss O'Donnell, I agree with you, and I ask this, could you please let us know who that is? Because we can't tolerate that kind of a teacher in our district.
Not right now.
Or administrator. So, Miss O'Donnell, if somebody said that about our teacher, and that was an administrator, I ask you, bring that name up so we can, as a board, discipline that, that administrator for talking disrespectfully like that. Now, having said that, I, I am not disappointed with the effort of the school committee. I've been on the bargaining team, I've been in here since day one. All I can say is this, we've really tried hard, from a financial perspective, uh, uh, there's no more money that the town has offered us to authorize. We just ask this, we just, uh... Well, you're absolutely right, but, but, but there was conversation tonight about the financial package.
That's a minor point.
No, no.
No, it is a minor point.
I think...
Raise your hand if it's not about money. I'm gonna go with them.
Okay, look, we're not gonna have a debate, go ahead.
So with that, I just want to say, we're trying really hard. Um, I, I, everybody that's on this board, including our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, they work really hard. Try to give them the benefit of the doubt. The school committee doesn't get paid, we understand that you're upset about it, we're just as upset about it as you. We're trying to get some more money from you, from the town, but if it is about money, if it is about money, then all I can say is, Jen, there's, there's, we have to protect every one of those teachers.
I agree.
Not just a twelfth step with a five percent increase.
I agree. I appreciate that, because I think that, um, we don't plan on dividing ourselves, just to be clear. Um, I also wanted to comment, I was not going to speak, because there are not just, um, four of you who should be recognized on this board for the school committee. Barbara Scar is also a member of the school committee who is overlooked, who works her butt off for the schools and the kids.
Who didn't recognize Barbara?
Al.
I've been a teacher for forty-one years, I, I'm sorry for what just took place, Al.
It's a trend with the school committee, it's a trend.
You're not at the speaker, you're not at the mic.
Can I, can I finish?
Al, I apologize, Al.
I apologize.
Sal, since I was, Sal...
I'll tell you.
Forty-one years.
Sal, since I was, can I finish? Since I was talking?
Forty-one years, Al's been a teacher.
Sal, I did not interrupt you, can you please extend the same courtesy?
Forty-one years. Sorry, Al.
I'm just wondering at what point we have rules at the table that everybody has to ask to play by. I was not disrespectful to you, I didn't yell out to you, and I listened.
Do you have a...
Yes, I do have something to say, I have a few things to say.
We'll have input, okay? Just forget him for a minute, and just do what you want to do.
It's hard when I'm being interrupted. Um, I want to be clear about a couple things. This isn't meant to be an attack on people, and, and people are standing up here because they love what they do. Every single day they get up, and it's not just about the money, by any means. The money would have been settled two weeks ago. It's not about the money. It's about making sure that you are taking care of the people in this community. We've talked about this, Jay and I have had this conversation the entire year. Your job, sitting at this table, is to inspire the admin, who are supposed to inspire the teachers, who inspire the kids. I choose to believe it is that simple. And when there's a breakdown, the kids are the ones that are impacted. Our morale in our schools is horrible, horrible. There are eight buildings, it's a common thread amongst all of them. We have a problem in our district that nobody wants to talk about, nobody wants to deal with. We walk around it, and I did this at one of the grievances, we walk around it like the outside of this table, and we don't go for it straight on. And instead, what happens when we go for it straight on, or when you choose to go for it straight on, you become the problem. And that's what's happened. The focus is no longer on making our schools better, the focus is no longer on taking care of all the people sitting behind me. The focus has become on the union versus admin, teachers who speak up, there's a divide. You just talked about it. Your speech did that. Do you care about the new teachers? Of course we do. I was a new teacher here sixteen years ago. It's not about pinning people against each other, it's about working together. Someday, I choose to believe, all of you sitting at this table will get that. Someday, I choose to believe, all of you sitting at this table will get that.
Well said.
I wasn't gonna say anything tonight, because I looked at the videotape of the last time I spoke, and I said I was never gonna speak again. But, um, I think...
I'm sorry, could you just give me a name?
I'm sorry, my name's Virginia Kramer. I live at 10 River Meadow Drive. I teach at the high school, and I'll be at McCarthy and Parker next year, teach art. And I think, you know, when people say it's not about money, it's not about this, it's a little bit about money, it's a lot about morale, and I think morale, I think we are in a really, a place that I've not ever seen Chelmsford be in. And I think along with people feeling frustrated, and, and there's, you know, people, one side pitted against the other, which happens in nasty negotiations and contract settlements, and it has to be healed afterwards. This contract will settle, I have no doubt of that, I hope soon, and, and then we're gonna have to put the pieces back together, and we're gonna have to work together, and we're gonna have to heal the district. And I really hope that, I had a conversation with one of the deans at the high school recently about this same topic, I hope that, um, going forward with professional development activities, and with, um, you know, whatever we do next year and the following year, that we can address our school climates, and our, in all of our buildings, and that we can do something to pull everybody back together again, and get us, get us back on track. Because I think, along with being angry, people are really sad.
I just, real quick.
Excuse me, just a moment. I don't mean to be rude, but if you, if, if you have something new, we'll listen all night, but we, we have a fairly extensive agenda, so we'll go on as long as new information and views are shared, okay? Thank you, go ahead.
Um, I just wanna share, real quick.
Name and address.
I'm Jacqueline Vitale, 200 Richardson Road. My husband also works in the school district, so our livelihood comes strictly from Chelmsford. My parents always taught me, actions speak louder than words, so if we're valued, show us.
Before we move on, I, I just want to apologize once again to Barbara. She's a very intelligent woman, who is a major contributor to the committee, openly expresses views that need to be expressed, has worked beyond the meetings, um, you know, it's, it's really a full-time job with her, and it was, I just looked this way, and didn't...
Barbara, all right, Barbara.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Sure, so we don't have, um, the CHS student reps tonight, the new ones will be joining us in a couple of meetings. Did you have any good news, Linda?
I just wanted to say, um, we graduated the 100th class of Chelmsford High School on Saturday. It was a great ceremony, and I just wanted to congratulate everybody that was involved, and also for our students, I'm very happy for them.
Again, without getting through a big list of examples, the students this year attained great things, and the teams are still playing in the various MIA tournaments, I think virtually all of them made, and all of the student activities have represented us very well. So the good news is that it was a good year for the students.
Do we want to wait one second just while people leave, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's okay. It's okay. Absolutely okay.
We're just waiting 30 seconds for, for people to, to be able to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck on Monday. Okay, the, as we move into new business this evening, the first presentation, we're gonna push off to a, a subsequent meeting, just because of schedules, we weren't able to do that this evening, so we're gonna skip Agenda Item Number One. We already had Agenda Item Number Two, which was the McCarthy and Parker School, students that came to report out. Uh, so if you're following along on the agenda, we're moving to Item Three. And Item Three is an update on the modular classroom construction at the elementary schools that's going on. So in your, your packet, I gave you just a couple of things. Um, we actually were doing very well on the modular classroom front. As you know, we went out to bid, um, early last winter. We were one of the first communities that went out to bid for our new modular buildings, and I think that was part of the reason that we actually got really good pricing on the units. And we have a very aggressive time schedule this summer to be able to put, uh, four different structures on at four different elementary schools. It's a very large project. Um, so the two different contractors that we have working with us are both, you know, in Chelmsford, on the ground working. The foundations, if you drive by the four elementary schools, have already been poured and, and they're in place. Um, and this actually, last week, we took delivery of the first set of modules for the center school, uh, which are the attached ones. Um, so those are gonna be a little bit tricky, because they actually were attaching to the building. So those, uh, came in first. So they arrived on site last, um, last Wednesday, and then Friday, a crane came to mobilize on the site, and Saturday morning, they actually physically placed all of the units in place at center school. Uh, so it actually goes that quickly. Over the next week or two, they'll go in behind, do all the interior finishes, try to get that working. Uh, they'll also start doing the exterior of the building, the, the brickwork and whatnot. Um, so it's really gonna start to take shape. I know a few members were able to go over there on Saturday and actually look at the work. They look incredible, they're even better now that they're together. Um, so that was centers. What I wanted to be able to do for you is the contractor Triumph, uh, who we're actually getting the modular classrooms from, gave us an itinerary of each of the schools to be able to talk about when the units were coming on site and when they were gonna be set, as well as a timeline. Uh, so I just attached those in the packets for you. If you happen to be watching the, um, uh, the construction, if you want to take a peek at it, uh, you have your dates. Uh, Center is actually technically now, you know, they're on their footings and foundations permanently, so that school is done. The next school that is gonna be receiving modular classrooms is the Byham, uh, not this week, but next week, on Wednesday, they'll be starting to arrive in town, and then a week from Saturday, the 17th, they'll actually be set in place. Um, one of the things we are gonna do is work with Chelmsford Telemedia, they've been great. We're gonna do some still photography of them, so that you can actually, I don't know how they do it, but play it all together, and it'll look like the building is being built right in front of you. So we are gonna capture some of this for future reference and use. Then the week later, uh, and this is again, a tight timeline, right as school is getting out, South Row is set to go, uh, and then Harrington is the week right after the 4th of July. So, uh, we're in good shape as far as schedules concerned. You know, you don't want to get too excited, because something could always go wrong, but I'm very hopeful and positive that, uh, things are gonna keep progressing the way they are. I'm very happy with the finishes that are included in the, the units themselves. We're gonna get to take a look at the, um, the next set, actually have the bathrooms that are associated with them, so I think we're in very good shape. But I wanted to share those schedules that came from Triumph with you, if you want to follow along, share that information with people. It's all public information, and, um, not that you want to be on the construction site while they're actually doing this work, but if you have a half an hour, an hour, it's pretty cool to see the units actually all coming together. And, uh, we will show at one of the, uh, school committee meetings, over the, um, the course of the summer, some of the, uh, the build-out. So I just wanted to convey that information to you, so that, um, so that you would have it. Any questions on the modular construction?
We're ahead of schedule?
Uh, as of right now, yes. We're a couple of weeks ahead of schedule for what we're looking for, for Center, and, um, the, on a positive note, we've received the, um, the schedule right from the factory, showing when the, uh, the units are coming offline, and when they're starting to come this way. There's no back orders on any of the major components, which is significant, so I'm feeling very confident that, uh, again, we're gonna be on schedule when we finish the project. We'll open in September without a hitch, and, uh, we're still gonna be, you know, well over a million dollars under budget.
Under budget, on schedule, on time.
Right. Correct.
Gary walked me through, uh, one of the buildings after all three were up.
Oh, Center?
Yeah, they're really impressive. I think Barbara posted pictures as well.
Very solid.
Yeah.
Gary warned, though, don't get too excited about being two, two weeks ahead of schedule, 'cause a lot of things can happen, but he feels that we'll come in on time.
Yeah. No, I, I think we will. I am glad that we made the decision to move, uh, the start of school back to after Labor Day, it just gives us an extra couple of weeks' time, um, but I am, I'm feeling very positive about that, so I think we're in good shape, and I'll keep you updated as we move along. Um, no, no vote of the committee is necessary, this is just for information purposes. Um, fourth item on the agenda is an update on the kindergarten enrollment for, uh, for next year, and a couple of recommendations for you. So, uh, enrollment has started to level off at the schools, we're not seeing the, the parents coming in quite as, um, fast and furious as they were through the, the winter and the spring. Um, I attached a two-page memo, and then a little bit of a chart that shows where the numbers currently lie. Uh, this is as of last Friday. Again, this changes on a daily basis, a child might add, a child might drop. Um, the, the one, uh, school that I am concerned with at this point in time, as far as the numbers go, is Byham. Um, not surprising, they have 97 students already, um, enrolled for, for K. The other three schools, uh, Center is currently with 85, Harrington has 89, and, uh, South Row has 76. Um, so as you look through the, um, the memo that I provided, you add up the four enrollments at those four schools, it comes up to 347. Um, that's, you know, about 45 kids more than we have this year in kindergarten, but again, that was to be expected, because moving to the full day, we're gonna pick up the kids who used to enroll in private, um, kindergartens. And when we look at the NESDEC enrollment projection, which was only off by a couple of students last year, they project, moving to full-day K for next year, 350 kids. So if we have 347, they were projecting 350, you know, I'm pretty comfortable that those are projections are in line. Again, you just can't dictate which schools the kids are gonna, um, uh, fall into. So, as my memo dictates, I'm recommending a couple of things. Um, one, at this point in time, through the budget process, you know that we, um, allocated appropriated funding for 10 kindergarten teachers, but we only moved ahead to fill eight. We added two more to each school, so that there'd be four classrooms. I am recommending that we add a fifth classroom at Byham, to allow us the space, because we do know that there's gonna be additional kids that are gonna move in over the summer, and I would much rather now, in the hiring season, be able to go out and get a good teacher for that, uh, school, and have everything be, uh, solidified over the course of the summer. So take that ninth position that we haven't filled yet, but actually fill it, and allocate that to the Byham school. I am not recommending at this point, uh, adding the fifth class at Center, Harrington, or South Row, again, because the numbers still leave us with 22, 23 per class at this point in time. There's a little bit of flexibility as well. Um, again, the enrollment projection indicating that we're just gonna go to 350, and we're only three students off, makes me feel comfortable that we don't need to make the, the adjustment at this point. Obviously, it's something I'll, um, continue to work on, and we'll work with Jay, the registrar, and monitor the numbers if anything changed. I had indicated I'd bring it forward, I certainly would. But what I'm actually, do you have a question?
I do have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
But, no, no, I, I...
Oh. What I was gonna, uh, say is, you know, we're still struggling at the elementary school level, we've talked about a couple of different times, as far as some of the supports for the students, particularly now adding the full-decade of the buildings. Um, I'm recommending in the memo that we actually take the 10th position, which was budgeted, and instead of hiring a kindergarten teacher, convert that position to a full-time psychologist position. Um, as you know, right now, we have two psychologists, we have half-time at each of our four schools. Um, and one of the needs that's been identified and really asked for amongst the teaching staff and the administrative staff at that level, is they need to move from a half-time to a full-time psychologist. That'll provide an extra full-time body in the buildings to not only do the testing, but to be able to provide more of the social supports and, uh, small group work, individualized work with kids. Um, and that can all be accomplished within the existing budget by basically reallocating the position from, uh, the kindergarten teacher line to the school psychologist line.
Excuse me, that, that makes two full-time, right?
We currently have two, so that would make three.
Okay.
And then, and that's all within the existing budget that's been allocated, right? Um, it's just a shift, because the positions appear on two different pages of the budget. Psychologists are on one page, kindergarten teachers are on another. But what I am then recommending, the second part of this motion, because I do think it's important, again, for the aforementioned reasons, as well as having, um, you know, two of our elementary principals are gonna be new next year, uh, again, the additional caseload and student support needs. I would like the committee to authorize me to hire, uh, one extra school psychologist, to basically be able to have one full-time body at, uh, each school, instead of the half-time model, and account for that either through savings that we realize throughout the course of the year, if there are some, between, you know, salaries that don't go fully, um, expended, or supply lines that don't go expended. But what the committee would need to do, because this is an unappropriated fund, is basically, in the event that we didn't have the approximately $55,000 at the end of the year in the budget, um, you would need to allocate some of your accrued school choice money. We estimate there'll be about $800,000 at the end of this year, in school choice money that will carry from 17 into 18. Um, so that would technically be the safeguard, that if we can't, uh, generate the $55,000 worth of savings within the budget, that we would use, uh, $55,000 of the $800,000 set aside, um, to fund that position. But I really do think it's important for the committee to consider at this point, just because of the service level needs of the students, um, the ability to add an extra half-time person to each of the four elementary schools, particularly with the full-decade and enrollment issues, um, I think that would go a long way, and I would like to recommend that and have that discussion with you this evening.
Okay, I'd also like to then compare that against the nurse floater position.
In what way?
Still an outstanding need in our district.
Mm-hmm.
Just wanna know, you know, we, we talked about having that nurse floater position, and then it went away two weeks later, because we needed a long-term sub in a, in a building. You know, this time of year is the worst time of year, because people tend to take off more, so we've had days with no nurses. And it's, it's beyond the, you know, the fear in the building of what could happen, it's not legal. We need to address that. And, and I understand the need for another psychologist. I don't, I want social workers in the building as well. I just wanna make sure that we're weighing the two needs.
Right. I, I, oh, go ahead.
What is the exact position that we're asking, as it relates to the nurses that we're requesting to be filled?
As part of this, I, I wasn't.
Is there, is there nurses?
Last year, what we did is, we, um, tried to kinda do a pilot program for the rest of the year, where we, instead of, um, hiring like a day-to-day substitute nurse, um, we tried to hire a nurse that actually would be, uh, technically assigned to guaranteed employment every day.
Right.
And just report to a school if they weren't necessary, uh, because absences weren't requiring them, and then, uh, reassign them based on need. But as Barbara indicated, a couple of weeks into the job, we did hire someone. We had a full-time nurse at one of our schools go out on her medical leave for the rest of the year, and we had to put that person to cover that medical leave. And then, it's very difficult to find nurses, we have not been able to attract additional people to serve as the floater, although we continue to advertise and, and...
Has there been any applications, Dr. Lang? Anybody interested in that?
I would have to go back and look. I do know that there's been applications, I do know that individuals have been reviewed. Um, you know, at least one was not recommended to move forward, um, but I can get back to you with more information on that.
So, what is the exact, um, terminology you need for this recommendation?
So, it is a memo that I gave you, um, that it's a two-pager that talks about, um, update on 2017-18 kindergarten enrollment.
Mm-hmm.
And on the second page of that memo, there were two bullets. It's basically, I'm asking the school committee to consider the authorization involved in those two bullets.
So the two different issues, all right, two different allocations?
Correct.
Coming from a line item?
One, the first bullet's coming, just as a line item transfer, it's an appropriation transfer within the budget. The second one is basically, uh, approving the posting of the position, and technically allocating school choice money, um, to that position. We may even, when we do a final, I was talking to Joanna, when we do a final, uh, update on the 18 budget for you, we may even show that as an offset, just so that it's documented within the budget, but then if we don't need to, uh, actually make that transfer at the We may even, when we do a final, I was talking to Joanna, when we do a final update on the eighteen budget for you, we may even show that as an offset, just so that it's documented within the budget. But then, if we don't need to actually make that transfer at the end of the year, we wouldn't do that. So, the funds would just remain within school choice and they would carry over to the following year.
So, would it be okay if we just did the first one, Dr. Lang, or do I have to read both of them?
I would probably do them one at a time because they're two different, they're two different things.
One is taking a kindergarten teacher and making it a psychologist, which is just taking something that's already budgeted and moving--
There's no possibility of taking the kindergarten position and making it a nurse I'm just looking at the obvious needs that have been addressed to us.
Question I, is if we fill the, if the person comes back from the leave, is the nurse floater position still in the budget?
The way we were paying for that was through, there's a line item in the budget for nurse subs.
Yeah.
So, we were basically paying for that out of the nurse sub-line. So, yeah, ideally, we wanted to give it a few months to see how it was going to work. And then, if it worked well, we could implement that for next year. I do assume the woman is coming back, the nurse, from the medical leave by September, so we could, again, utilize that sub-line to pay for a piece of the nurse floater.
We could. When you say next year, you mean next school, September? Okay.
I mean in the fall. I think the current staff member--
I just don't want it to be next fiscal year.
Do we have any evaluation of how that--
It'll be after July one.
Right. Yeah.
So, that trial is gone?
Well, for the, for the few weeks that it worked, it went well.
Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it was literally just a few weeks.
So, we didn't have any basis?
Right.
And--
I did try to get Mrs. Thomas to come--
It had to have had a restart.
Right.
She wouldn't. Yeah, she was mad that she did that.
So, there is that possibility. We can restart the pilot program in the fall and see where we're at.
Yeah. I just want--
Yep.
A word, a promise, you know, I want it on in the record. Because it's, it gets, it gets scary. And, and, you know, there are field trips involved and kids involved and, you know, we need to, we need, you know--
I've been a school nurse for twenty years in the district.
Yep, you know.
I'm pretty well aware of it.
Yep.
For what it's worth, my mother was a nurse too. And I mean, I absolutely, you know, support this, and I know this is a real cause.
Okay, I just want--
I, this particular issue really kind of specifically targets some additional supports for the elementary schools, which we have been talking about for a long time. This isn't just like a wish list type thing. I think you're going to see significant, you know, kind of bang for your buck by these positions. And again, just dealing with some of the new movement that's going to be happening within staff, having an extra fifty kids of kindergarten age in your building all day long, you know, this, I think that we're going to be well served by this.
Okay. I had a question with respect to the enrollment numbers for the kindergarten. Comparing the total number of kindergarteners going into the Byham so far, what's that, ninety-four?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven. How many, if we were to combine last year's half-day programs, were in the program at Byham last year?
Can you say that again?
Well, if you were to take each morning and afternoon and--
Yeah. How many current kindergarten kids are enrolled in Byham right now?
If it were a full day, if it were a full day, it's two half-days, so, yeah, number--
I don't know.
Same number of students, though.
Yes.
It's the same number of students, we just split them in half.
Okay. So, what's the number currently?
Keep talking and I'll--
All right. The issue, the issue that, no, Linda will find out first.
I know.
The list, the issue that happens is, because we only offer the two half-day programs, there's a group of kids that are actually enrolled in private, like full-day programs. That's a group that aren't captured in our numbers at all.
Right.
So, we're seeing that now in this ninety-seven.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm curious. That's what I was thinking, is those students whose families wanted a full-day program are now enrolling and getting what they wanted. I'm curious how many of those students there might have been.
Sure. And Linda will pull that up.
Okay. You want to go on with the vote?
I would keep talking. I'm going, I don't know.
So, with that, I recommend that the school committee authorize the following actions at the regular meeting today, June sixth, two thousand seventeen, one. An appropriation transfer of fifty-five thousand eight fifty to the psychologist line item twenty-eight hundred from the kindergarten teachers, line item twenty-three oh five, item to FY eighteen budget. The shifts of one-point-oh FTE allocated for a kindergarten teacher to a one-point-oh school psychologist position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I would also like an addendum that it includes the, that the substitute line for school nurses will include a floater position.
Is that related to it? Would that be a separate item? Or is that, can you add that to that? This is different, this is a topic?
It's--
I don't know.
I don't know. It's a, it's a budget cost. We're just highlighting those funds in that, that line item.
So, this, this line item, Barbara, is for fifty-five thousand eight fifty?
I don't know the cost of a floater nurse.
So, you--
Can I just make a remark? So, usually, when you, when a motion's amended, it's germane to the actual, like, items that are being discussed. Yours is kind of like, not an add-on, but it's a totally different matter. I almost think, if you want, we only have two weeks of school left, and we are going to be kind of sitting to review that whole kind of nurse floater concept and whatnot, even the funding for it. I have no problem at either the next meeting or the very la, very latest, that first meeting in July, providing you with kind of a report and recommendation around that. And you can vote on that. I mean, you've already approved a line item of the budget for substitute nursing. How it gets allocated is really more of a mechanical thing. It's not like you're appropriating money to it.
Okay.
So, I don't mind bringing, looking at that and bringing forward a recommendation for consideration, and then the committee can vote up or down to, to support it. If I can get it by the twentieth and we have data, I will. If not, I will promise you it'll come at the first meeting in July in plenty of time to do something for September.
Okay.
But I would almost recommend not having it be, because it's a different matter, tie it into that particular motion.
Okay.
Further discussion? Hearing none, this is a money item, so we have a roll call vote.
Seventy-six.
Cao?
Aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous, five-zero. Okay, so.
This is Chairman, I recommend that the school committee authorize the following actions, regular meeting, June sixth, two thousand seventeenth. Authorize the hiring of an additional one-point-oh school psychologist position in FY eighteen and appropriate accrued school choice funds, if necessary, to provide for said additional one-point-oh school psychologist position. This action, combined with the appropriation transfer outlined above, will provide two new school psychologist positions for FY eighteen that will be directed to the elementary school level of the district, yielding a full-time school psychologist at each elementary school instead of a half-time school psychologist at each elementary school.
Was there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, just how, how will this appear in the budget?
So, that's what we're talking about today. So, you're going to get at the June twentieth meeting, a refined fiscal eighteen budget now that everything's been finalized. So, it'll probably look like one of those, on the psychologist line, you'll see an extra FTE and an extra fifty-five eight fifty added, and then right under it, you'll see like a less charge back to school choice. So, you'll see the positive and then the negative. It'll offset to balance to the budget that's already been approved. And it's technically an offset. But what I was indicating is, over the course of the year, sometimes you do develop, you know, surpluses. So, if we don't have to, at the end of next year, tag this money back to school choice, we can just, you know, utilize existing resources within the budget to pay for it. We won't hit the accrual on school choice. But just know that, in worst-case scenario, you've got eight-hundred thousand dollars in school choice, you may have to appropriate, say, fifty-five thousand to pay for this position. You know, hopefully, this will not be like a recurring type thing. We will see how this goes over the course of the year. I think it'll be pretty well successful, and then we'll try to incorporate this into the budget going forward.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing done. So, sorry. Aye.
Aye.
Definitely wanted to join.
Aye.
Aye, aye, five-zero.
Linda just indicated on your number, it's seventy-six.
Seventy-six. You have seventy-six current kindergarteners at the Byham.
So, we're adding approximately twenty more. You have the pods, though, and they're getting an extra pod, two classrooms, so.
Yeah, see, right now, they're technically getting, we're adding two, well, we're going to be adding three kindergartens, right? But we added six classrooms.
Right.
So, there's still technically net three up--
Yes.
At the school.
Okay.
So, we're reading into a little bit of that surplus. Okay?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I think that'll actually really be very well received in the elementary schools, and I can report back to you with some updates along the way. Fifth item on the agenda is a little bit of a budget adjustment. I tagged it that way, related to the coordinator posting. And then, I'd emailed you out a memo from Linda a couple of weeks back. You technically don't need to take a budget action on this because we budget the coordinators within the same line of the budget regardless of their discipline. But we've been having the discussion, you know, back and forth about, you know, do we move forward with an English coordinator? Do we move forward with a science coordinator? We looked at the pros and cons of everything. You know, we certainly took people's feelings into consideration when looking at this. But, you know, one of the things that we've looked at is, we're putting together our kind of strategic plan and plan, you know, for the next three years in the districts. Science is certainly going to play a key factor of that at the elementary school in particular with the whole rollout of the next-gen science standards and the Phos Science kits and whatnot. That coupled with the fact that we're fortunate that, you know, Linda's background is really English, and she was the English coordinator--
I can do math, too.
You can't do math, too. She was the English coordinator--
I wouldn't say that to a lot.
In science.
And she's very, you know, obviously very comfortable with that role. We are recommending, moving forward and trying to attract a candidate to the science coordinator position. So, we have tentatively started to at least advertise that. Technically, the school committee doesn't need to take an action as far as like a budgetary movement of funds, but wanted to report that back to you because we told you we'd come back and have a conversation with you about that recommendation, answer any questions you may have, and, and see if we can't recruit a, an excellent candidate into that for, to start this summer and help us transition for the fall.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank, you know, thank you for considering. You know, we had several people come up and have voiced their opinion, and we've had some conversations, and I agree that both the English and the science coordinator positions are very important, and they're going to, you know, hopefully, in the near future, we can fill in both. I think, at this point, this is a, you know, a good way to go, and so I do appreciate that you took the time to listen to--
No, you're welcome. We've talked, but I mean, I think it makes sense for a number of factors, and we're still early enough in the hiring season where I think we'll be able to attract some good--
I hope so.
Some good takers. And, you know, I don't, I also don't think it's, because a few people had talked about, well, you know, should we kind of change things up? Should we do like some additional hybrids? And again, when we talked about it, we're a district that really has one coordinator for a particular discipline or content area, where a lot of districts actually have multiple. So, they would have one that specializes in, say, K to five, and another one that would do, say, six to twelve. We have people that were asking to be really content specialists in twelve-grade levels of work, which is incredible. I think, honestly, to kind of water to that down anymore and to try to manipulate it or cut one out is just diminishing returns as far as our product. And I don't want anyone to be frustrated with the product that we're putting out. So, you know, the, the direction would be to move forward with the full-time sciences here, providing we can find a good candidate for that job, have Linda certainly help out where, where needed as far as providing some guidance and oversight for the English department. And then, you know, the goal will be to, again, next year when we're doing the budget, look to be able to add that, that English coordinator back in to bring us to a, you know, pretty full complement of, of English, of coordinators. But I do want to throw out that we still have that one hole with, with kind of the world language. But I think as a district, we need to take a look at that particular position and maybe look at, you know, that might make sense to do like a world language slash ELL or something that we have to do some work on. But, you know, one at a time, try to, you know, kind of knock off and bring back some of these positions. But as someone mentioned earlier, I think this is, this is actually going to be a big year for us. You know, we've, we're implementing full-day K, we're adding a few positions back into the budget. If we can really get, again, someone good for science and see some returns with the whole next-gen science standards being implemented, I think we'll position ourselves really well for nineteen when we're looking to add those last few elements back into the budget.
When do you anticipate the position being posted?
It's posted.
It's posted. We wanted to at least--
Eight interviews.
In about a week.
Okay.
At the latest.
We wanted to get started, at least doing some recruiting before schools started to let out.
It's that time of year.
Yeah, really.
Exactly.
So, we got, we have it posted, and, you know, as Linda indicated, we'll start kind of screening people a week or so from now. Doesn't preclude us from inviting other people in as they, they apply, but, but that's our plan. Great. So, everyone good?
Good.
Okay. Sixth is personnel report. This is just the detailed listing of employee transactions that occurred during the month of May. Cheryl Kirkpatrick in the Personnel Office provides this for us.
You did.
And again, it just reviews new hires and transfers and whatnot within the district. Just a good way to kind of track for you some names and faces if you see different people in different jobs. No action among the board is required, just wanted to convey that information to you. Seventh item on the agenda this evening is the annual vote to appoint the school committee's representative to the Valley Collaborative's Board of Directors. The committee, for the last two years, has voted to appoint me to serve in that capacity. I love it. I'd be happy to, to serve in that capacity again. It's really a great group, and there's superintendents in the various districts who are, are part of that, are a good group to work with. We meet every other month. Valley, as I indicated it, a meeting or two ago when we're working on the budget, is really in good financial shape at this point, a far different situation than a few years ago. And we are looking at a return, which, again, part of our budget was predicated on, of about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for eighteen. So, we're still going to have to work with Joanna and Dolly to figure out how we want to account for that, if we want to receive a check and deposit it into one of our accounts, if we want to take a credit and apply it towards fiscal eighteen tuitions. But we'll work on that internally and report back out to you at the end of the year when the number has been certified, because we do have to wait until June thirtieth for the final number. But I'm happy to serve as your representative to, to the Valley Board if you so appoint me. It would require a roll call vote, and then the chairperson would sign the delegation form.
So, I'm going to make that motion to appoint--
I make a motion to reappoint Jay Lang to the Valley Collaborative.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Dennis would just--
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero.
Yeah, you can say that, and then we'll, we'll send that one in. And the last item on the agenda this evening is just an approval of a field trip. This is the Chelmsford High School class of two thousand eighteen. This is next year's class that needs to go out and look at some prom venues, and they're looking on June ninth to go to Atkinson, New Hampshire, which is out of state, Atkinson, New Hampshire, which is out of state, so that's why we need the approval. And they're also going to go down to Boston to check out a venue there as well. But I would recommend your approval on this trip.
How far of a drive is that?
What, Atkinson?
Forty minutes?
Yeah, twelve forty minutes.
All right, so closer than Gillette?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just on the other side of Salem.
Yeah.
Okay.
Plastow, Atkinson, right next to each other.
So, I make a motion that we approve the field trip to Atkinson.
Second.
Second, sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any negative voter abstention? Non, five-zero.
And that's all I had for you this evening.
Liaison reports.
Well, we, we need, no, we don't need to do that, just at the same time.
Yeah, I just listed it because they're going to both venues, but you don't have to vote on that one.
No. Okay, any liaison reports?
Not really a liaison report, but I just want to say I went to the Byham Art Show today, which is a pretty great event where they display all the students' art for each year, and then you get a big pile of all the artwork they did to the year. So the teachers do a really good job. I enjoy it every year, and then it means summer's coming, so that's really, it's kind of the indicator for me. So great, they do really great work.
Good.
Okay, I went to the Council of Schools meeting last week, and they gave out their two scholarships, and the topic of the scholarship, the students are charged with the assignment of writing about the member of Chelmsford Schools who had the greatest impact on your education. This year's winners of the scholarship, the students get $1,000, the teachers get $100, or teachers or faculty member.